Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll get started in just a few minutes.
Hey, we have Dave, I see. Hello, Dave. Hear us? He's muted or everybody's muted. Liz there? Folks are muted. Almost ready here. Let's hear her. All right, is everybody muted on this thing? See, I'm okay, but.
Without causing any.
Yeah. Yeah, you're cool.
That's cool. Thank you.
Well, why don't we just add, uh, be on.
Pardon me? Oh, you. Yeah, they didn't give you any hints? Hey, Dave, you're clear for landing on runway two? Feel like a pilot here. Are we getting close to being ready here, folks? Eight thirty. Amy, you are muted, I think. You can unmute yourself.
Good morning. I apologize. I'm just seeing my kid off the box to school here, so. A little bit of, little bit of background, but thanks. Thanks for your.
Apologize for not getting back to you. It's been a week and a half. But I'm sure you get, you have your ideas put together the right way. You always do. I think we're almost ready. Michael's still getting plugged in here. I don't see Misty Witherspoon. We have Liz, Jimmy, Kathy, and Dave, and Michael on the way.
Said he was gonna be a little bit late. He was on another Zoom.
Mr. Betza, how are you this morning?
I am wonderful.
And you? I think from now on, we're gonna call you Esquire Ed, so there's never any problem with me getting asked any questions, okay?
I know. We've got Ed, Ed B. None of it works.
Yeah. So is that not offensive, Esquire Ed?
I don't think there's anything you can say to me that would be offensive, so no.
Okay. Keep us, keep us separated, but equal. Reese, get on. We're gonna see your face. We'll see your name. Okay. Michael, you ready? I guess we should get started then, huh? Without further ado, Amy, are you ready to talk to us?
I am. So, thanks. Thanks for your time. I appreciate it, as always, and, you know, the, really, just the purpose is to make sure, you know, we're keeping an open line of communication with you as, as members of council, so, so appreciate the opportunity, and I'll, I'll try to be brief. I'm gonna spare the share screen this morning, if that's okay. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at the materials that, that I sent, but really just wanna kind of give a top-level overview of the work that we're doing at the chamber, and then, you know, I'm always available for follow-up if you have questions. But I wanted to just kind of go back to a couple things, because it's been a little bit since we've talked, but a couple things have happened in 2020 that I think are important just to share again, you know, or perhaps for the first time if I haven't already. But one, the Innovation District became part of the chamber, and so really, the only, the only piece of the Innovation District that, you know, we kind of knew, you know, but before it became part of the chamber that is now still in existence is the Business Accelerator Program. So that is essentially startup, you know, businesses go through that program, they get some investment, they get some professional resources and consultation to be able to really support their business growth as they're getting it up and off, up off the ground. So that was one I wanted to make sure that council was aware of that. The other kind of big organizational change for us is the Erie Regional Manufacturing Partnership. They're also now part of the chamber, so we seem to be a little bit of a lightning rod. We're kind of, you know, gathering some strategic partners here. That one in particular is pretty important for us because of their, such their high need for workforce development. And of course, we've been a big supporter of the Community College. The Community College, their offices are also, you know, housed, you know, at the chamber. I mean, they're not part of our organization, but they're, you know, running some space from us, essentially, so those two things, I just wanted to make sure that I had shared those kind of organizational updates. Any questions, can, you know, concerns on those two items?
Amy, could you tell us how many, how many of, if, if any of the original Innovation District startups stayed in Erie or how many, I have, even though that was under a different umbrella, have you tracked to see, maybe not even how many are in Erie, but how many are went on to success? Is there like a metric to measure how, how we've done so far with innovation?
Yeah, yeah, there, there is. So, I want to be, I don't want to give you the wrong number, so I'm hesitant to say, but I can certainly share that. I, the majority of them have been successful, you know, and, and part of the model is that some of the local partners that have invested in them, you know, as these businesses grow, you know, so does that investment that they put with that, with that business. But we have, so two things that we did this year with the accelerator program that are significant. One, you know, kind of increased the, the metric, just like what you said, Liz, in the businesses, or, you know, whether it's the leadership or the business themselves that are committed to staying in Erie. So that was part of, there was an increased requirement for that kind of Erie-based. And then the other metric that we looked at were, you know, BIPOC entrepreneurs, so, you know, minority, you know, we wanted to make sure that we were making an intentional effort at, including, you know, additional minority entrepreneurs in that program than what we had in the past. Is that helpful?
Very helpful. And I just wondered if you could elaborate a little bit on ERMP. For those who might not be familiar with it, I know the initials because I remember when, you know, some of the manufacturers who were first involved in that came to the editorial board at the newspaper to present, so it's been a while. Maybe just talk a little bit about what, what their goals are, but also how, how were you able to fold them into the chamber? Because I think that that's sort of an amazing feat. Because we know that previously there was, you know, in some circles, not, I'm not talking about ERMP, but there could be contentiousness or competitiveness or something, so tell us a little bit more about who was involved in ERMP, what kind of job skills they're looking for, and how, how you got to a place of not just talking, but being part of, them being part of you. I just think that's a, another success story that probably needs to be amplified.
Yeah. So that, I, I think, you know, the partnership really is credit to, you know, our leadership, our CEO, and our board, and really kind of cultivating that partnership with the leaders and the businesses in leadership at, at ERMP. You know, what, what I think that group is really looking for, really just the staff to, to do the work. Quite frankly, they, they didn't really have, so they had to work with some other consultants kind of off and on to do, you know, some of the work, but they really didn't have a, a team dedicated to kind of a program of work that they wanted to do. The work that we were doing, you know, with the Community College and workforce department, and even a lot of the marketing and outreach efforts, the business attraction, all of that, it's similar in scope to what they're hoping to achieve. So I think it was just a natural connection, and again, that relationship between, you know, our CEO, leadership, and both level among both organizations.
And again, have they had, you know, we're waiting for the Community College, but have they had some, made some strides in getting the trained workforce they need? I, I sort of think that they modeled themselves on a similar effort in Ohio, but it's been a few years, so I, and you know, Ohio has been able to boast about its trained workforce and business attraction, so I, have they been able to, you know, inch forward even as they're waiting for the training opportunities to, to be there?
Yeah, I, I think so, and, you know, I want to be upfront in that I'm still learning some about their history and trying to digest, you know, where the work that they've achieved thus, thus far. But I think so. I think, you know, I mean, if, I don't know if any of you had a chance to tune into our State of the Workforce event, but we did, you know, we had a manufacturer as well as representatives from career links, so even just bridging those connections a little bit better, I think has, you know, has been successful. We've held at least two briefings, you know, with some of their leadership and the Community College at this point. They'll try to, again, our goal is just to try to, you know, match the curriculum with kind of what's out there in, in the market, so that as students are coming out of that, they're, they're coming out to a job. So I, I think so, but I'm, I'm still learning. I'm still getting up to speed a little bit.
Thank you.
Sure. So kind of moving on to 2021 and some of the work that we're doing, I talked about the accelerator program a little bit. That, that continues to be, I think, a great asset that we want to cultivate. We see that growing more and more, and hopefully providing a better pathway for, you know, local investment into some of these startup. We, we think that there's untapped, you know, wealth here locally that could be, you know, having an interest in, in investing in some of these startup businesses. So really, just as a whole, you know, really working to kind of cultivate that startup and investment in that entrepreneurial kind of culture here. One thing, we, I think, like everyone in the pandemic, you know, it really forced us to kind of challenge ourselves and say, okay, you know, what is our value? Like many businesses, we too, you know, saw financial hardships. We're a member-based organization, and as businesses were going out of business, you know, we, the last thing we want them to be spending money on is money for the chamber. So that has really kind of led us to, to think hard about, okay, what is our core value? What is it that we really do? So a, a big focus for us this year is doing kind of what we do best is business outreach. And that is in really intense meeting, meetings with businesses to say, you know, what's keeping you up at night? You know, often those are workforce development, capital challenges. But it's not just, hey, I went to a, you know, networking event and I said hi to, you know, so-and-so from, you know, Joe's Candy Store, whatever it might be. It's, it's an intense, you know, sit-down meeting, where then after that meeting, then with them, we develop an action plan, a series of referrals, you know, maybe it's a grant program, maybe it's some, you know, workforce development program that's available, that's a good. So, so we have a goal of doing 250 outreach visits this year. We've done at least 40 now, so I think we're well on our way to our goal with that. The other thing I wanted to reiterate too is, so yes, we're a business organization, but we're also economic development, so those initiatives, you know, we, we want to continue to prioritize those and, and just continue to communicate those as a priority. So, you know, we were really excited to see the investment with some of the dollars for some redevelopment of some of the dilapidated, you know, parcels in that 12th Street corridor. We like that kind of investment. We think, you know, we, we know from the target industry analysis we did with Garner Economics, we don't have enough kind of like shovel-ready, pad-ready sites and buildings inventory for that business attraction. So we think the more kind of redevelopment of those sites we can do, the better chance we'll have at attracting some of those businesses and, and keeping them here. So, but it's not just that property, you know, redevelopment, it's things like, you know, the city's investment in downtown streetscape. You know, we've said before, we've supported, you know, the, the Bayfront project and that connection between the downtown and waterfront. So all of those things continue to be a priority for us, and I would just, you know, ask that you kind of keep those in mind as, you know, the city's getting these relief funds and thinking about kind of long-term investment and, and what that looks like. Two more things, and then I'm done. I promise. A little bit about government affairs. So you may have seen, some of you may have seen that we put out our first ever public policy agenda, so I sent that to all of you, so hopefully you had a chance to take a look at that. As kind of a policy wonk and, you know, government nerd, I'm, I'm really excited about that because that gives us a really good framework of how we do our advocacy. So there's a number of issues in there, but it's primarily, you know, workforce development and then building a better business environment. So, you know, we're also getting more and more involved in elections, so this year we're doing a meet the candidate event. We've asked, you know, local candidates to complete a questionnaire, which again, that's based on our policy agenda, so everything we do in our government affairs space will be based on that agenda. It's probably not perfect, but, you know, your input on that is really valued because as we move forward, we always want to be continuously improving that. I do want to reiterate, you know, our role is to represent the business community. We're not community development as a whole, we're business. But we do recognize, you know, things like public health have a tremendous impact on our workforce. There are issues in the community that do have an impact on business, which we're cognizant of, or we try to be cognizant of. And then lastly, I did just want to touch, you know, on the workforce development piece that I, I can't, you know, the Community College and other workforce development initiatives are so, so important to us, and so we value, you know, the city's kind of support of those initiatives as, as well. You know, I'd said that the, the college is, is based, their office is actually in the chamber offices now. We're continuing to try to make introductions, you know, we've met with ERMP, we've met with young Erie professionals and Radius and a number of different groups. If there are groups out there that you think that the interim president, Dr. Gay, should meet with, happily take those recommendations. You know, perhaps she's not met with some of you even, you know, I'm happy to facilitate that. So now I'm done. I've sucked time, but I really appreciate.
Yeah, you did a nice job. A little bit of background, I was on the original committee that councilperson Giles organized for the Community College way back before the Civil War. So I'm very well aware of the Community College. My stake in it has always been, my boss at Central for years, Mr. Tempestini, vocational education. Let's, please don't lose track of that. College is great for a lot of people. Vocational ed is where it's going to be in the future here. You know, it was, this is a true fact, that for every retired person, 10 service people are needed. When I say service people, I'm talking about occasionally trained people to do things that, as we get older, we can't do. So it's critically, critically important for us to stress, I'm not saying, you know, we're college-educated folks, we know the benefit of college. But in today's world, if you don't have a specific major when you go to college, you could be living in the basement with mommy and daddy and trying to pay off your loans when you don't have a job that can pay off the loans. That being said, I want to get off my, my footstool that I usually preach from when I talk about vocational ed, but it's something that's been very close to my heart the last 15 years of my career in education, and I can't say it too often. Please don't lose track of the vocational ed, because there's a whole lot of people out there that could be trained and trained well. So I thank you very much. You guys have a big umbrella, me and you. I'm proud of you, just being able to keep everything together. And I would be remiss if I didn't ask Mr. Overstott to say something. He's up there in the corner. I think you're muted, though, Jay. We can't hear you.
Thank, thank you, Ed. And thanks, everybody, for a couple of minutes just to talk to you about an item on your agenda for today, which is the resolution approving the issuance of about $24 million of bonds through the Higher Ed Building Authority for the benefit, again, in university. The state law requires that the municipality who formed the authority approve issues by the authority for either educational facilities or healthcare facilities, obviously educational in this particular case, as being in the best interest of the health and welfare of the community. The purpose of this bond issue is to save some money, on the one hand, to buy refunding bonds that were issued a few years ago to build what is known as the North Hall Dormitory. That's on West Fourth Street across from the Gannon Rec Center, and to renovate the old RCWE building on Eighth and Sassafras into what will become known as North Hall, which will be apartment housing for students. Based on some value engineering and some of the Erie, early bids that have been received, there may be a little bit of money left over after those two projects are completed, and I've asked Attorney Betza, Ed Esquire, excuse me, to include a few more words in the exhibit to the resolution authorizing those excess funds, if any, to be used for other capital projects on the Gannon campus. And that's pretty much. And that's pretty much it. We're teed up for a bond closing sometime before the end of April. They are going to price the bonds shortly, but they anticipate on the refunding portion, they'll go down from rates in the 5% range to the low 3% range and that they'll have a similar rate of interest on the bonds for the renovation of the RCEW building or what will now be known as South Hall. And happy to try and answer any questions that any of you might have about this.
We were with Mr. Messina when we okayed it through Gannon earlier. I think it was the beginning of March, whether Gannon had to have the meeting to okay going forward with that. So I am well aware, but I think if there's any questions from the board here, anybody else have a question, we can have them come in. But I think you did a good job of telling us about it, Jay. Anybody else? Well, other people are muted out there in case you're trying to talk. I, I think you did a great job, Jay. I have no questions.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jay.
We're, we have five minutes to burn here, so we can, let's, we have something, Lori? Okay, we, we had our study session last night and got to the meat of the order. So I think unless anybody else in council has any comments, let's take a break and then we'll start our meeting at nine o'clock. Questions from anybody? Everybody's okay? Let's take a five-minute break.
Testing, testing. You could hear me? Testing, testing.
Testing, testing.
Mr. Witherspoon, I have you loud and clear, but I do not have your video. Could you please turn your video on?
There, okay.
There we go. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Now I can see all of you, Lori.
It was just my head now.
I know. All I've seen was your forehead. Okay, I think we're ready to roll, Ms. Lori. Let's go do it.
All for the city council meeting of Wednesday, April 7th, 2021 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Minarsky, and Mr. Witherspoon. Please stand for silence, prayer, and the pledge of allegiance.
Mr. Keys?
Can this work out? Unmute myself?
Wants to give us his prayer, but he can't get.
I'm good. Dear heavenly Father, we just want to thank you for this day. We want to thank you for assembling the council together. We ask that you give us a a right spirit to approach the business of the city today, that we may make good choices and that our city may prosper. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
United States of America and to the Republic, which stands visible, liberty, justice for all.
2021 city council meeting at Phil's for payment on April 9th, 16th, and that's it. Ms. Allen, Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Minarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, and Mr. Brzezinski. I have two repository sales. We got questions back from Mr. Charles Step, who wants to purchase property at 333 East 20th. Is the property vacant or does it have a structure on it? The property is vacant and nothing is on it. I plan to open Yvonne's House of Soul Food, a walk-in delivery service restaurant. The condition of the property is completely open. I live a very short distance from the property at 515 East 14th. How will you provide for maintenance, responsibilities, mowing, snow removal, rubbish? I am currently having a building being constructed, constructed, which will be delivered to the property upon obtaining the deed. The restaurant will be open year-round, which will cover the landscaping through all seasons. I have already been working with the Erie zoning office to ensure my business is current and up to code. Thank you for this opportunity. And I have something from Mr. Thomas Clanton. He's seeking purchase 302, 304 East 26th Street. Okay, property is vacant, does not have a structure on it. My plans and intentions are to build a small-scale takeout food establishment. The condition of the property is pretty blighted. I currently live less than a mile away. I will provide maintenance for the property by mowing the grass, cleaning the rubbish from the property in the winter months. I'll keep the snow plowed and the sidewalk cleared. There is a note that it has when you're ready to vote. Okay, that takes us to citizens to be heard.
Freda Tupper?
Freda Onfray? There she is. I think you're muted, Freda.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
Thank you. So there's several things I wanted to comment on. On the agenda, you have money for the active Erie plan. The active Erie plan seems to focus more so on bikes than on sidewalks as far as the degree of specificity of funding and planning. Really is important to ensure that there be a pedestrian walking focus. You need to ensure that anywhere that they put in a lead pedestrian interval, it has to be done in conjunction with an accessible pedestrian signal. Otherwise, people who are blind and visually impaired lose their ability to use traffic to tell them when it's safe to cross. The APS would tell them when they have the light. It doesn't tell them it's safe. And you also need to ensure in the Eighth Street Plan, any, any LPIs installed would have any new intersection should have, pedestrian crossings should have lead pedestrian intervals. And you need in the, in the active area plan to address the lack of maintenance by commercial church and industrial property owners. Their sidewalks should be in walkable condition all year round. Both the active area plan and the quality of life enforcement plan should be geared to address the lack of sidewalk availability on commercial sidewalks. In the ordinance addressing wood, if you're going to say seasoned wood, it has to be unpainted. Please ensure that people are not allowed to burn any kind of painted or treated wood, which, which has a bad chemical smell. I was disappointed once again to not be selected for a committee that I was well qualified for, the Urban Forest Committee. I hope that the Urban Forest project, that you have the ability to ensure tree planting is consistent with the goals of increasing biodiversity and stormwater management. Best practices would foster planting of appropriate native species around trees, not mulching or requiring my mowing right up to the trees. I was able to access the information on the Bayfront Study Steering Committee meeting, the Peer Review Committee meeting on roundabouts. However, it should have been a public study session. And the same with the one on the pedestrian bridges. I do want to say that the recommendation of Kilsin said that they recommend a single-lane roundabout because it would reduce the length of the pedestrian crossing. And while that's an admirable idea, that it also eliminates the requirement to put in a controlled pedestrian signal there with an APS. So they should not be able to not have a pedestrian signal. they should not be able to not have a pedestrian signal, a controlled signal, so that visually impaired and other pedestrians know when it's safe to cross. I, I do want to say that Perry Square belongs to everybody, not just the downtown Erie partnership, not just the Perry Square Alliance. And while it's admirable to provide services for people who are homeless, they have a right to sit and congregate and enjoy Perry Square. And we should never try to sanitize our downtown. Um, one last comment, the Gannon measure that you're approving. This is an excellent opportunity for you to address the need for community benefit agreements. What are they doing to ensure adequate salary and requirement to employ local contractors? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Bob Howden?
Bob, are you there? Yes, not free. Looks like he's muted.
Mr. Howden, uh, I don't know what device you're using, but there's a should be an arrow at the bottom of your screen. You might have to select the microphone, either same system or microphone array, depending on if you're using a computer. If you're using your phone, you might have to just, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, we hear you.
Uh, my name is Bob Howden, four thirty-one Vermont Avenue. Um, my remarks this morning are going to deal with the Cockle Boulevard Bridge and the Ravine Drive access road issue. Uh, first of all, I wanted to thank Mayor Shember and council members Allen and Brzezinski for attending our March twenty-first neighborhood meeting, uh, where the concerned residents were able to get some additional information on the issue and express their opinions as well. Uh, we also deeply appreciate the mayor's recent comments, uh, questioning the need for the new access road. Uh, that was certainly good news. I'd like to add, however, that I think all of the area residents want to see this issue with the bridge addressed as soon as possible. And we look forward to hearing about the city's plans in the coming weeks. Um, in the meantime, however, the neighbors will continue to remain vigilant and continue to garner support for opposition to any attempt to build a new access road down to the yacht club. Uh, we feel very strongly about this and we will certainly continue to monitor the situation. Thank you very much for listening to me this morning and I wish you all a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Howden. That's it today? Oh, moving right along.
Order for the first file passes. Council file number sixteen two eleven. Official file ordinance sixteen twenty twenty one. An ordinance appropriating the sum of one million dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. Funds will be used to carry out the City of Erie Safe Routes to School Project through the Transportation Alternative Set Aside, TA Set Aside Program. The funding will be used for updating signing pavement markings, traffic control devices, and sidewalk improvements that will enhance the safety of the student walking routes in the City of Erie. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Keys. The council file bill number sixteen two eleven and now known as official file ordinance sixteen twenty twenty one be finally passed by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Minarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council pass official file ordinance sixteen twenty twenty one by yea seven, nay zero. Council file number sixteen two twelve, official file ordinance seventeen twenty twenty one. An ordinance appropriating the sum of two hundred fifty thousand from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. The funds will be used to carry out the downtown Erie Active Transportation Project through the Transportation Alternative Set Aside, TA Set Aside Program. Funding will be used to add bike lanes, crosswags, and a wayfinding signage system throughout the city's trail network. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Keys. The council file bill number sixteen two twelve and officially known as seventeen twenty twenty one be finally passed by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Minarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council pass official file ordinance seventeen twenty twenty one by yea seven, nay zero. Council file number sixteen two thirteen, official ordinance number eighteen twenty twenty one. An ordinance appropriating the sum of twenty eight thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof. This is the twenty twenty Justice Assistance Grant. Sponsored by Mr. Minarsky, seconded by Mr. Keys. The council file ordinance bill sixteen two thirteen and now known as official file ordinance eighteen twenty twenty one be finally passed by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Minarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council pass official file ordinance eighteen twenty twenty one by yea seven, nay zero. Council file number two fourteen. Official ordinance number nineteen twenty twenty one. An ordinance appropriating the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars to be received from the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency, PHFA, and made available through the Pennsylvania Housing Affordability and Rehabilitation Enhancement Fund, PHARE. The funding will be utilized to provide grants to low and moderate income owner occupants for repairs or improvements to their home. Sponsored by Mrs. Schoff, seconded by Ms. Allen. The council file number sixteen two fourteen and now known as official file ordinance nineteen twenty twenty one be finally passed by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Minarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council pass official file ordinance number nineteen twenty twenty one by yea seven, nay zero. Council file number sixteen two one five, official ordinance number twenty 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 one. An ordinance appropriating the sum of four hundred thousand dollars from unappropriated revenue to be received from the Liquid Fuels Tax Fund and provided for the expenditure thereof. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Keys. The council file ordinance bill number sixteen two one five and now known as official file ordinance twenty twenty one, twenty 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 one be finally passed by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Minarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council pass official file ordinance twenty 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 one by yea seven, nay zero. Okay, council ordinances for first reading. Council file number sixteen two one six. An ordinance in accordance with the twenty twenty one City of Erie budget, the sum of two hundred fifty thousand dollars is appropriated from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue. This amount will be used by the City of Erie Capital Fund for expenses related to the City Hall Security Project. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon. Okay, seconded by Mrs. Schoff. The council file ordinance number sixteen two one six. Having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Do you want to hold the vote?
My comment before the vote, very simple. This is a first reading. Uh, unless we get some definitive information from upstairs on this, I think there may be some trouble of passing anymore. Uh, this is quarter of a million dollars. We have a police force in the same building. I'm wondering just what we're spending this money on. And I, I'm voting any affirmative on the first draft here. Unless we get some very definitive information before that's probably going second time on.
I'd, I'd like to respond to that. Having a police force in the building is not going to provide the kind of security that's needed. I refer you to the shooting that occurred in, at Virginia Beach City Hall. Um, and we've had how many mass shootings in the last couple of weeks? And there are other obvious security issues um, when dealing with the public, including the health and safety during the pandemic. So I'm sure we'll get a better explanation. You know, we had a, if you walk into the courthouse, you have to go through security. So having the police in the back of the building or even a police officer standing in the front isn't going to provide the kind of security that I think is needed in today's environment.
Laurie, don't miss the point. I'm not, uh, arguing with you about security. You're hundred percent right. My point, once again, is that this can be all decided before we even know what's going on. And I have, I don't know if anybody else is.
I think we do need more detail.
Yeah, exactly.
Where the money can help.
Before we start spending it. Quarter of a million now, what's it gonna end up being? Lot of questions. I'm sorry, go ahead. Mr. Keys?
Well, um, I'm not saying on four against, but I think that, uh, in light that we'll be receiving, uh, monies for, uh, with the CARES Act. Um, once again, wondering if this two hundred fifty thousand dollar expenditure could be covered by CARES Act money. And I think that I'm taking the stance that I don't want to spend any money until we know what we can spend other money on. Um, I think it's, you know, the money that we extracted from the local taxpayers, we should get the best value out of it. And we can do that by using the money from the federal government to offset any and every expenditure that we are able to offset.
Thank you, Mr. Keys.
Mr. President?
Mr. Witherspoon.
We were told last night that we can be reimbursed from the monies that we receive from the federal government that we spend uh, on items that we need. I believe our security should take precedence over anything else. Because once we come back into the chambers, we are sitting ducks if we have someone out there that don't like one of us or all of us. And it only takes one or two seconds for that to happen. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I think we're ready.
Voting on the ordinance, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff. Arsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council File Ordinance sixteen two sixteen, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. City Council read and adopt sixteen two sixteen by yea seven, nay zero on first reading. Council file number sixteen two one seven. An ordinance amending the quality of life ticketing ordinance to expand the definition of fines for illegal burning. Sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mrs. Schoff. Council file ordinance sixteen two one seven, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff. No? Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Minarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski.
Before I voted on, no, I voted on that again. There were two options given. Kathy, we decide which option Mr. Hart wants us to do. There was the one that he didn't charge him any money for four times or something. And the other one was a after the third episode, the money we started to pay. Do you know which one that we do a lot of more, option two?
I believe they get a one and another time after that.
So it's option two? I'm an affirmative.
We couldn't hear Ed or Kathy because you were both muted, so.
No, I said when we got the, uh, the readout on this ordinance, uh, there were two options from Mr. Hart. One was much more, uh, lenient on the people. And the second option, which is the one I wanted to see, was that after, after three times, it's time that, you know, they, they pay a fine. We can't give them five and six shots. But I was told by Miss Schoff that, uh, they did put option two on there. We didn't get that clarification. But now that we have it, I'm an affirmative also.
I can read the part that's changing, if you'd like.
You can read it, Laurie.
Open burning shall be prohibited when atmospheric conditions or local circumstances make such fires hazardous. Open burning prohibited when winds are gusting to or sustained at ten miles per hour. Open burning, bonfires, recreational fires, and use of portable outdoor fireplaces shall be constantly attended until the fire is extinguished. A minimum of one portable fire extinguisher complying with section nine oh six with a minimum of a four A rating or other approved onsite fire extinguishing equipment such as dirt, sand, water barrel, garden hose, or water truck shall be available for immediate utilization. Residents are permitted to burn only dry seasoned firewood in approved containers such as metal or mason refiring, portable outdoor fireplace or chimenea, hand dug fire pits, burn barrels, or containers not normally used for recreational fires are not permitted. Recreational burning shall be permitted between the hours of five PM to eleven PM on weekdays, Monday through Thursday, five PM until twelve AM on weekends, Friday through Sunday, and federally observed holidays. First offense, twenty-five dollars, second offense, fifty dollars, third offense, one hundred dollars.
The only question I have is who's going to tell people that the winds are ten miles an hour? On the internet?
You're muted, Ed.
Oh, my other, my other question was, who's going to tell the general public that the winds are over ten miles an hour? Just, again, things that I know Mr. Hart spent a lot of time on this, a lot of hard work. But those are questions that you're going to get thrown back in your face by the general public also.
I think what this comes down to just takes a little common sense to, uh, be respectful for your neighbors or we wouldn't be having to add this to a ordinance. Uh, it took a dozen people or two dozen people in the city that just did not respect the neighbors. And, uh, so that's why we're here today with this. It's going to just take common sense of people that still are going to have their fires. I like fires myself. Um, but really, take a little common sense and, uh, respect for your neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Mr. President?
Yes.
There's a weather app for those people who have Android phones or cell phones. And if you click on it, it'll tell you the.
So the burden would be on the public.
This is, that, that's a, you do have an enforcement issue when we're talking about a ten mile an hour wind. Was it nine and a half or was it ten? That's really not, as I understand it from talking with Mr. Hart, that's not the intent. What you want to have is you want to be able to have an ordinance that prohibits burning in high wind situations. So if we've got twenty-five, thirty mile an hour winds, that's when the people are going to be getting cited because it's clearly that it's well over the ten miles, which creates a fire hazard. And across the county, there have been a couple of bad fires where people had open fires, uh, in high wind situations. And that's what Mr. Hart's trying to prevent with the proposal. Um, it, Mr. Brzezinski, you're absolutely right. There is an enforcement issue. Uh, but I, I don't think we're going to be looking to try to get somebody at ten miles an hour. What you're really trying is to be able to cite them and have that upheld by the district justice in a high wind situation.
Good as the public here, thank you.
Voting on the ordinance? Oh, we did that. Okay, city council read and adopt council file ordinance sixteen two one. Okay, City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance sixteen two one seven by yea six nay zero on first reading. Council File Number sixteen two one eight, an ordinance amending twenty fifteen International Fire Code, Section three oh seven point one point one, prohibited open burning and three oh seven point five attendance. Sponsored by Mrs. Shaw, seconded by Ms. Allen. The Council File Number sixteen two one eight, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council read and adopts Council File Ordinance sixteen two one eight by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Council File Ordinance sixteen two one nine. Ordinance, purposes of authorizing the use of water lease funds defined herein to refund and debase the City of Erie general obligation bonds. Series of two one one, three eleven, general obligation bonds. Series of twenty twelve and a portion of the general obligation bonds, series of one ninety nine eight B. General obligation bonds, series of two thousand and one C, general obligation bonds. Taxable series of two twenty fifteen A, general obligation bonds. Tax exempt series of twenty fifteen B, general obligation bonds. Series of seventeen B, general obligation bonds. Series twenty nineteen A and general obligation bonds. Series twenty nineteen B, directing the city clerk to prepare, certify, and file the certi- the required debt statement and filing with the Department of Community and Economic Development and to take all other necessary action, providing for signature, seal, and authent- authentication. Approving the escrow deposit agreement, authorizing the proper officers of the city to contract with the bank for its services as escrow agent, authorizing and directing the state clerk to certify and file with the Department of Community and Economic Development certified copies of the necessary proceeding proceedings. Coveting that the use of water lease funds shall not be used in such manner as to cause the refunding and debaseance of the City of Erie general obligation bonds. Series of two eleven, twenty eleven, general obligation bond, series of twenty twelve, and a portion of the general obligation bond, series of one ninety nine, nineteen ninety eight B obligation bonds. Series of two thousand and one C, general obligation bonds. Taxable series of twenty fifteen A, general obligation bonds. Tax exempt series of twenty fifteen B, general obligation bonds. Series of twenty seventeen B, general obligation bonds. Series of twenty nineteen A and general obligation bonds. Series twenty nineteen B, to arbitrage bonds under federal law, tax law provisions authorizing the proper officers of the city to do all things necessary to carry out the ordinance and rescinding all inconsistent ordinances.
Do you read that, Laurie?
Sponsored by Mrs. Shaw, seconded by Ms. Allen. The Council File Ordinance Number sixteen two one nine, having been read, hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys.
Yes, the keys is the middle.
Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number sixteen two one nine on first reading by yea six nays one. This takes us to new business.
Anybody call for the remainder?
Motion to move to that.
Motion to move to balance. We have a second?
Second.
Mr. Witherspoon gave us a second. Any uh putting singling out?
Any uh new business?
Separations.
Separations and.
I just wanted to single out the uh number nine. Um, I just think it's important to let people know that we're supporting this, so it's. I'll talk about when we get to it, so. It's not opposed, it's supporting it, but I just think anytime you can ampl- you know, give voice to the importance of organ donation, it's important.
Agree. Hey, Laurie? You know what? We better do eight just so we make public aware of what's gonna be happening with the Airbnb.
Good idea.
Okay, moving to the balance of the agenda, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, and Mrs. Brzezinski. We have resolution number eight, sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mrs. Shaw.
Resolution receiving the communication from the City Planning Commission recommending amending zoning ordinance eighty twenty oh five to consider proposed amendments to incorporate language for short term rentals and authorizing and directing the city clerk to advertise for a public hearing to be held before city council on Wednesday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty one, approximately eight P M. Discussion?
I separated that just for public knowledge. This has been bubbling on the back burner for a long time. Nobody's fault. Uh, we tried to get it on sooner. We had a problem with the stereographer, I understand, Laurie, right? This is nineteenth was the first. So that's the date that we will have a public hearing. And uh I'm sure, hopefully, maybe this will be open and we can have real people here. Uh, that's all I have for that.
Voting on the resolution, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. Motion passes, yea seven nays zeros. Resolution Number nine, sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mr. Keys. National Donate Life Month twenty twenty one proclamation Erie, Pennsylvania. By becoming an organ tissue and cornea donor, one individual can save the lives of eight individuals and heal the lives of more than seventy five. During National Donate Life, we honor the compassion and generosity of registered donors, donor families, living donors, and recognize the commitment of researchers, innovators, champions, national partners, and medical professionals who work tirelessly to save and heal lives through donation and transplantation.
I just wanted to sep- I'm sorry, separate it just to um, like I said, emphasize the importance of this. Having been on the end of making decisions of um i- in one case, cornea donation and and skin graft uh donation, and then traveling to the um center in Pittsburgh that um honors people who have um been donors, honors their their memory. I just think it's important to remind people about this. It's it's a tough thing you're going through when you're grieving, but you realize that you're helping others in many different ways. So that's all. Thanks for sponsoring this resolution.
Therefore be it resolved, city council recognizes the importance of course mission to save and heal lives through organ tissue and cornea donation. Furthermore, and with on behalf of Erie, Pennsylvania, do proclaim Erie, Pennsylvania observes April twenty twenty one as National Donate Life Month. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. Motion passes, yea seven nays zero. Committee reports?
Committee reports, let's uh begin with Mr. Willis.
No report, sir.
Mr. Chris, Mr. Winarski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended the E M T A meeting and they they are looking forward to uh federal money assisting them in their need because of COVID affecting the bus system as it has. Uh ridership is going up, but it is still down from pre-COVID and um still uh going through their changes that is needed during this time. Hopefully soon, things will be back to normal as people are vaccinated and uh COVID gets under control. I attended the recruitment of the firefighters and the police officers, and it was in parti- it particularly addressed to women and I encourage all young women to explore that opportunity of being a firefighter and a police officer. I helped last Saturday at the um Community Shelter Services. And that is a wonderful place that is committed to helping people in need. And thank you to everyone who helps there. And attended the C D B G public hearing. Thank you to our organization uh here at City Hall, Deb Smith, Veronica Fields, and Dave Dieter, who do an excellent job in making sure that the money is allocated to the best possible people in need for that. I've been getting some calls already about fireworks. Do not set off fireworks in Erie, please. We live in a city where our houses are close. People should not be setting them off in parks or parking lots. Fireworks cause problems. Do not set off fireworks. It is not responsible of you to do that. Also, I've been getting calls about loud noise, music, loud cars. I do have cars that go by and shake my house. That is not acceptable. That is too loud. That is noise pollution, and it should not be. It happens a lot with motorcycles and cars that think they can be as loud as possible. Do not do this. We need to be courteous of other people. We are a community. We should be kind. We should be loving, and we should look after each other. The same way, I love polka music and I love rockabilly music, but I am not going to blast polka music throughout my neighborhood because not everybody likes polka and not everybody likes rockabilly. I will keep it in my house where I can enjoy it. So we need to be courteous of others. Also, clean up. I used to hang out on street corners like I I see people do today. But when we left to go home, there was not a big mess on the street corner. We need to be courteous of our neighbors and pick up after each other. Today is a beautiful day. I have some free time. I'm going to be cleaning up other people's messes. I should not have to be doing that. Everybody needs to be responsible to clean up their own trash. Yes, enjoy the outside. Yes, enjoy your friends, but be courteous of other people. You should be able to drive down a street without a crowd of people blocking your way. People should see a car coming and step aside. We need to realize that you are a responsible human being. And in a community, we need to care for each other. Think of others. Don't be smoking out your neighbors now that the neighbor are, the air is really nice. We need to slow down. Speed limits need to be adhered to. So I think I covered all my bases. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Kathy. Mr. Kim, are you ready?
Sure. Good morning, everyone.
Can I hear you, sir?
Good morning, once again. Just want to give an update on the Accuride noise issue. Uh, did reach out to a representative there again, and he did respond back. It looks like April fifteenth is the day that uh the new muffler system is gonna be installed on the exhaust fan they have, so we have still got a few uh emails and uh calls regarding the noise. And we appreciate the neighbors with their patience as the, once again, I've heard it, I hear it, but uh it is gonna be handled here within the week from, is what I've been told. Wanna make mention, it is nice to see that uh, I've talked to Dave Mulvahill. Some of the streets you see have already been milled. It looks like we got an early start this year. Uh, it attributes that to not having the large item pickup, so we have more manpower to get the millage started. And uh, he said right now, it's all the city, the city itself, our crew is doing this. Uh, we haven't contracted anything out just yet. Those bids haven't gone out, but uh my understanding, the asphalt plant's supposed to be open within a week here also, so they're milling up, uh, we need to start getting paved and uh getting a nice uh month and a half start here on our paving program. Still want to know where we're gonna get the paving money in twenty twenty three and beyond because uh that's part of a conversation with uh some of this uh recovery money, if that can be used for that or not. But uh, we still have some conversation. We're gonna have to address on that. One other item, I just wanna roar on the shore, uh, decided not to do it anymore. And uh, just want to give them accolades for the years they have done it. It has been a economic impact to our community, community in the millions and to nonprofits and to businesses. I know there was a week of uh noise in motorcycles year after year, but uh, big picture, it was a asset for Erie and Erie County, so for the years of service they did in help providing a, a place for people to go and help our community. I just want to thank them for those years. Other than that, that's all I have for this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, couple things. I just wanted to um thank Amy Burdock, who spoke to us in a caucus this morning about their their current initiatives. Um, she talked about the business outreach, which is so important, especially during the this pandemic. Um, she's talked about startups, entrepreneurs, how important it is to Erie, and we have many, and we continue to need to support, support those those people uh that really help in our city move forward. Talk about economic development efforts, um, the community college, connecting the needs of our businesses and manufacturing with the curriculum uh is so important. And then diversity initiatives are a focus of the chamber, just like uh, just like we have at the city. I also wanted to note um the uh, for the water lease prepayment uh bond that we approved today. Yeah, as we all know, paying down, I think we all know, paying down the city debt was one of the main objectives of this lease prepayment. Uh, given the long term effect of these decisions, you know, I continue to be very cautious and to try to make sure we're hearing from the financial experts, that to make sure this is the best use of the funds. Uh, what helped is we had a study session last night to ask questions uh and discuss. Uh, so I was agreement in moving forward with the bond uh payment ordinance this morning. Uh, the Erie Parking Authority, no report other than two discussions on the municipal agreement. Um, and then lastly, um, I was asked to serve on the Erie Downtown Partnership Design Guidelines Committee. Uh, the Erie Downtown Partnership received a grant uh to pay for design guidelines. Um, RFP is being sent out soon for consultant proposals. The purpose of the RFP is to retain professional consulting services for development and preparation of design guidelines and standards. for development and preparation of design guidelines and standards. And it's for the 12-block focus area from Second Street to East to 14th Street along state. The design guidelines will give advice about how to treat defining features, a facade, the look and feel of the facades to make sure they remain an asset to our community. They will address topics such as building rehab, maintenance, new construction, signage, lighting, seating, so forth. In addition to producing the guidebook, which will be good for our community, this effort also produces a series of educational print pieces to distribute to current and new business property owners, as well as produce a series of workshops of how-to sessions. They'll be scheduled within six months following the completion of the guidelines. So I think this will be a great educational opportunity for, for Erie to, to assist building and property owners to, you know, make sure we're keeping with the, you know, the, the look and feel and the design that we want for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Ms. Ellen.
I guess, did, we didn't do Michael Keys yet, though, did we? Did we do?
At the end.
At the end, okay. All right. I attended the spring meeting yesterday for the Pennsylvania Municipal League. And I learned that legislation to allow municipal police departments to use radar to enforce, enforce speed limits has advanced in the State House. Legislation has previously been approved by the Senate, and the House had been the holdup. So it's viewed as a positive sign that the House is moving this legislation along. If, if this gets approved at the state level, it would require a local ordinance to enact. And I just wanted to remind council that we approved a resolution in favor of this legislation, which is also backed by Chief Dan Spizarni. It's House Bill 955. So if anybody wants, including any residents out there would like to follow up with legislators to support this legislation, I think it would be important. Pennsylvania, I believe now is the only state that does not allow municipal police departments to use radar. And we know Kathy Schaff had just talked about speeding. We know that it's, it's a life-saving measure. One of the things we did not talk about at the meeting, but which we, as council should be keeping track of, is a proposal to repeal the state law that has allowed these big fireworks to be set off. I'll get some additional information about that. I think that would be a good one where we should pass a resolution supporting that. And again, follow up with our legislators. I learned that the municipal league can actually facilitate video chats with our local legislative delegation. So that might be something to keep in mind. I don't know that we've ever really had a lot of outreach to our legislators, but some of the things that we know, some things residents expect us to be able to solve aren't solvable at the local level. They require state enabling legislation or changes at the state level. So I'm thinking that maybe that might be a way to move forward, maybe even if we had like some kind of quarterly meeting. A lot of the discussion at this meeting was about the American Rescue Plan, which is the COVID relief bill, which will be helping municipalities across the country. And one of the speakers was VN, who is from PFM, which is the consultant we use to develop our plan to get out of debt, get pension costs under control. And she stressed the need to make sure that, you know, we stabilize our finances, not just for the city of Erie, but for all municipalities who are hurting. And it talked about the opportunity that will provide when your finances are stabilized to make the kinds of investment, of investments that, you know, that we need. One of the things she specifically mentioned was a sidewalk repair. So I wanted to, I'm not saying that there's money in this bill for sidewalk repairs specifically, but think about that opportunity as we've adopted the Active Transportation Plan. And we have, you know, questions at every council meeting about how to make sure that, you know, our sidewalks are in good repair for pedestrians. One of the other interesting things is that we had the, the whole league meeting, but then we broke into the Northwest District. And Mayor, the Mayor of Corey, Dave Mitchell, who some of you may recall, has served on county council. He served in the Ridge Administration. He talked about the importance of the broadband infrastructure and what potential that has to make us a tech hub in northwestern Pennsylvania. Sometimes we might just think about the city of Erie needing broadband or rural areas. He talked about it more in a, in a regional aspect. And one of the really cool things he told us is that he's been approached by a West Coast company that, in Seattle, actually, that realized that Corey had very affordable housing, which is also, you know, a story that we know is, is part of Erie, too. In general, we have affordable housing. And that because of the pandemic, people no longer want to pay $400,000 for a tiny, tiny little house, but maybe they'd like to look at a place in Corey or relocating for remote, to be able to work remotely. So I thought it was good to point out that there was a story in the Erie Times News the other day. Erie ranked among the best cities for remote work in Pennsylvania. So going forward, after, after COVID, you know, life is going to be changed, but we have opportunity here. One of the other things that the people stressed in talking about the, the American Rescue Plan is the opportunity to work not just collaboratively, like say, the mayor and the county executive, but across municipal lines. So even though we've been through these really hard times, there are a lot of bright outlook about what this bill can provide. And it really changing how, how we view things. There's one other piece of legislation which I would like to, I'll get some more information about. But it would require a more, a tracking system for properties that are sold at tax sales to address blight. So I think that that's something that we can work into our conversations at, you know, either Blight Property Review Committee or the Land Bank or the Redevelopment Authority, because we know what happens when things are just sold and then resold and fall back into blight. So I had mentioned the National Infrastructure Bank at the last meeting. And I actually brought together somebody from the Jefferson Educational Society and the Infrastructure Bank Coalition to see if there might be an opportunity for them to do a presentation for a greater Erie audience to learn about what the infrastructure bank proposal is all about. It's not something, I mean, when I'm, I'm on these Zooms with people who have, you know, PhDs in economics and, and deep knowledge of previous, you know, reconstruction programs under the, you know, the FDR administration. So I think it would be good to have the experts be able to bring this to Erie, and I'll keep you informed as to how those conversations move forward. That's it. But let's remember fireworks for the next meeting. See what we can do to have a, you know, a united voice about how to, how to deal with that before it gets, it starts to get crazy again this summer.
Always some knuckleheads, huh?
I don't know if anybody heard, I'm 6:30 on Easter morning, AM.
Mr. Vice President.
Well, I haven't done a report today. But I did want to send a shout out to the Cathedral Prep basketball team. They won the five A's state title a couple of weeks ago. My grandson plays on their team. And it was quite a ride across the state and through Hershey and coming back victorious. And so I'd just like to congratulate that team.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Piggyback on that, if we ever get this City Hall open again, I want these kids down here, not just Cathedral Prep State Champions. I want the Erie High District Champions, who had a great season also, and the Villa Girls. Came within one of winning it all, too. These kids deserve to be seen. And right now, with things closed, that's the only reason we haven't done it yet. He's not even on top of that. I think Mr. Boone agrees with me. We need to get the young ones involved.
No doubt. No doubt.
Thank you. My quick report. I was in heaven yesterday for a few innings. I went down to the Sea Wolves Field, and I watched the high school baseball game for a little bit. Golly, that's a beautiful place we have here in Erie. And I really wish that the, the people down in Harrisburg would get their act together. You know, right now, the Sea Wolves don't know how to market their ticketing because they're being restricted to 2,000 people in an outdoor facility when 75% restaurants can be open. If anybody's listening out there, Harrisburg, open up your brain, huh? It's just common sense, a beautiful edifice like that. And the folks don't know what Sea Wolves, how to market those things. Right now, hopefully by May, they'll have a better idea. But I'd like to see it tomorrow right away, getting it done. That's basically all I have. How about Mr., I'm sorry, S. Square Ed? Anything for us?
Just one thing. We, I, I may be stating the obvious, but I just wanted to kind of summarize for anybody listening. I mean, last year, when you had the PFM report, you really had, and we talked about this yesterday, you had three main issues that are plaguing the city. Pension, debt, and spending more than we make. Last year, with the, the mayor and council together, you addressed the pension issue. You addressed the life expectancy and made it realistic. You have a realistic return rate on your investment. And you also now are using earned income tax from both residents and non-residents to address that pension issue. It's not cured, but it's actually, for the first time, under control. Today, you took the step to address the second problem, and that is you have crushing debt. And by taking the money that you're, that, that comes dribbling in, in essence, from the Water Authority, you have it in a lump sum and you're applying it on the debt. What that's going to allow you to do is increase your, increase your bond rating and also have a better ability to, to have more money that you're not going to be spending on interest payments. The last issue that council needs to address, and it's an ongoing issue, and the administration's been trying to address it as well, is to reel in spending and spend what we make. Either make more money or spend less money. But I think you're well on your way to helping Erie become a, a, a much, much better city than it was just a few years ago. And I just wanted to at least say, congratulations. I applaud what you've done so far.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Stankevich, Yakshamash. Do you have anything for us?
I do. I just wanted to follow up on an email that I sent everybody about the pension plans. We have filed all the required state reports by the due date of March 31st. And they've been accepted, and they're under approval or review by the state. And they're going to be starting their annual audits here shortly. And next month, we'll be having a quarterly review meeting on the pension funds. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Last but not least, Ray, you're okay?
Morning. Yep, I'm ready. Bear with me. I wanted to pick up quickly on where Attorney Betsa left off. I want to thank council for voting to authorize the use of $79 million of the water lease funds to pay down debt. This is a huge step. Council, council's never really done anything like this before. It's usually just been pushed down the road on the backs of future generations. And this is going to have an enormous impact and a savings for city residents in the amount of $86.3 million. So congratulations. I know it's been a long haul and a lot of back and forth, but this is, this is a really important step. Second, we had a meeting last week regarding the American Rescue Plan funds with Senator Casey. And I also met with Representatives Merzke and Harkins. Again, we don't have anything in writing yet in terms of what the funding will be able to be used for and the reporting requirements that will be involved. But we're being told that it can be used for, you know, transformational programs, things to really help the city recover from COVID, help the economy to recover. So, you know, we're looking at what things we've already developed internally that could require, that could use more funding, such as our neighborhood revitalization efforts, our, our business grants that we've created. And we're, we're impatiently waiting for more information. Also, good news is that the state, of course, will also be receiving American Rescue Plan funding. And so we're going to be working very closely with our state reps on that. You know, though, though the CRIS program is not open for applications and hasn't been since 2014, I think there's some confusion about that. There were three awarded, and there have been none awarded since. One of the things in a CRIS, though, you're not allowed to get RACB funding. So in 2013, the city had applied and was, and was denied. Since that time, the city has gotten $81.8 million in RACB funds in that footprint. So, you know, though we're not able to apply for a CRIS, we are going after every available tool and resource that we can. And we've been told that RACB will be one of those areas where a lot of the ARP funding will be put. So that's going to be a really important resource for us. And we've requested increases in several of our line items dealing with neighborhood revitalization, industrial remediation, economic development, historic preservation, these kinds of things that are our focus, that are inactivating our vision. So next, on the City Hall security. You will be getting more information tomorrow. Public Works will be updating you. The mayor and I just received an update yesterday. Just briefly, I mean, the things that we will start to get in place will be for, you know, building security, you know, like the county courthouse has, the magnetometers, X-ray machines, some, some of which were already on this agenda for check requisitions. The, this building security in terms of having three security guards in the lobby when people enter, there will be the need for asbestos abatement, general maintenance cameras, servers, these kinds of things. So you'll be getting a lot more information on that tomorrow. Next, in terms of the Ravine Drive, Kaukua Bridge project. Want to thank Mr. Howden for speaking. We really appreciate the input of residents on this. They live there, they know, you know, what they experience, how they use the bridge, how they use Ravine Drive. The mayor and city engineer, John Touschak, will have an update on plans tomorrow at the 10:00 AM press conference. Thanks to resident input, we've, we've changed course and we have next steps to announce. Also, I wanted to make everyone aware that we have from the, you know, previous CARES Act funding, we have rental assistance and mortgage programs for residents. Residents can apply, those experiencing a loss or reduction of income as a result of COVID-19 can apply. Household income must be at or below 80% of median income. They can reach out to 814 Shelter and ask to be referred, referred to GCAC or St. Martin's Center. They receive the funds from us to administer. There, they can get emergency income payment for rent or mortgage principal and interest not to exceed, exceed the greater of $5,000 or six months of payments. So we want to make sure we're getting that information out to residents. We'll also be sharing that at an upcoming press conference and on social media. Also, our flagship fund grant program, that was our first ever grant program for small businesses, is open right now. The deadline to apply is April 16th. The maximum award will be $2,500, and that requires a one-to-one match. So if a business spends $2,500 and brings us the receipts, then we will provide them with $2,500. Locally owned franchises are eligible if they are within the city limits. And this is for any small business with 25 or fewer employees. And this is for any small business with twenty-five or fewer employees. So if anybody's interested in applying, they can reach out to Jen Hoffman, who's our Business Development Officer in the city, that's J. H. O. F. F. M. A. N. at erie.p a.us. Quickly, next, KIVA, that's our program that we, we announced in December. We've had three entrepreneurs already go through the crowdfunding, public crowdfunding phase and have, each has been funded in like less than four days, fully funded. We had Dina Rupp for the Perista Cat Cafe was funded for $9,500 loan. Allison Minor of Serendipity Suites was funded for a $7,500 loan. And Armando Reyes of Lake Erie Woodworks was funded for $6,000 loan. These, the, this program is really exciting because people from all over the world can donate. And this is available to those who've been marginalized and don't have access to traditional forms of lending to start and grow new businesses. So by providing these loans with no interest, KIVA is helping us expand our small business diversity within the city. And so, like I said, it's really exciting. I'll tell you that we have another entrepreneur right now in the private lending phase, and we expect him to be able to go public today or tomorrow. So keep an eye out for that. We've been showcasing those on social media. And he may also make an appearance at tomorrow's press conference. Let's see, did I miss anything? Oh, CDBG, Kathy Schoff mentioned that we had the public hearing. That was, when was that? Monday? That was Monday. So I just wanted to, you know, thank Deb Smith and her team. That's an enormous undertaking to get all those applications in and get them out. We're receiving a total of $4,244,478. And the money is going to be reallocated out to some rec programs and community centers and shelters and for more rental assistance and facade grants and housing rehab and home buyer programs and blight demolition and for the Small Business Development Center, Paramount Pursuits Thriving Erie Program and the KIVA Program and so many other things that are helping our residents who need it most. I think that's it. I think that's all I have for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Renee. You know, and the concerns of transparency. If the Fifth Floor was, talked to about what's going on with Green Drive and the security here yesterday. I find it a quantum leap to wait till Thursday when we had the general public watching our meeting. They could have found these things out today. Matter of transparency in my mind, I think we should be made aware of things as soon as you are. Having said that, I want to leave it on negative, because you worked very hard, Renee. We're proud of the work you do, but we do need better communication. I think both of us can agree with that. That's all I have. Did I, I didn't miss anybody, did I? Is it good to your order? Say goodnight.
City Council adjourns at ten sixteen AM.
Good afternoon.
Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.
Good day. We'll see you, buddy.